This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call this June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Sedalia City Council order. So before we begin, we're going to go ahead and have our prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we're going to do something a little different. We're going to have Mayor Pro Tim Bogut go ahead and lead us in the prayer.
I say thank you, Father, for this afternoon, this evening, that we gathered here together. May all of the work in the businesses that need to be taken care of be done decently and in order. We say thank you for the protection over our firemen and our police officers here in the city of Sedalia. We ask you to continue to lead and guide the city council as they make the decisions for the city of Sedalia. These things we ask in our God's name.
Good morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call, please. Robinson.
Here.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
Do I have a motion in a second to approve the council meeting minutes from June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two?
No move.
Boy, you guys said it all at the same time. I have a main motion from Councilman Oldham, and then I heard a second from over here. A little bit.
Jack.
Jack. The second from Councilman Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, under unfinished business, we have public safety. Chairman Robinson, would you go and take us through this?
I call for a second reading and sign the petition to the board and authorize a three-year agreement with the city of Sedalia and the Rine County Department taking reasons for compliance.
Do I have a motion in a second for the second reading?
No move.
Well, a motion from Councilman Oldham and a second from Councilman Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash ninety-one, an ordinance authorizing a three-year agreement bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Fire Department, and Bryser LLC for use of the compliance engine.
Second reading.
Okay.
A motion from Councilman Oldham and a second from Councilman Richardson.
Is that what the final passage is?
Yeah, final passage, okay.
So you're moving final passage?
So I've wrapped in final passage.
I'll second.
You have a second.
Okay. Real call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
All in favor? Let's see, up next, I have a real call of standing committees. Finance Administration's first one up. Chairman Richardson, you have the floor.
All right, well, I'm going to pass it over to our administrators.
All right, great. Well, thank you. You have there in front of you the chart that you're used to seeing by now. As you can see, the sales tax were down significantly for the month. Just as a reminder, this is April sales. And if you add up the net sales and use tax of fiscal year-to-date, they are up just a little bit, by fifty-seven hundred dollars or point one percent, which brings us to a budget variance of unfavorable variance of nearly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. When you look at, we had budgeted for a four percent increase. However, I did look back, and if you notice, FY twenty-two was up significantly, particularly for the month. There's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was up in last fiscal year, or last year. And they were up thirty-four percent, which was a huge month, leading to a thirteen point four percent annual increase. So just the month of June collections or April sales were accounted for twenty-four percent of the total increase for the year. So if you take a look at FY twenty-three over FY twenty-one, or the April two years ago, we are still at a seventeen point four percent fiscal year-to-date increase. So again, I, one month does not make a trend, and if you really look back, you know, last, last year, this month was kind of an anomaly. And even though the trend was very high. So I think we're still in good shape, at least through April sales. But it is something that we will want to continue to watch and see where we go. If you also, if you look at franchise taxes, you know, again, year-to-date, we are up pretty significantly, seven point seven percent, or thirty-seven thousand dollars. And I look back at that, and, you know, electric was down last month, now back up. The gas is up significantly, so all of the franchises, the electric, gas, and telephone were all up. But the gas, I really, the only thing that I really saw there is that it's probably weather-related. You know, this, this, this period last year was a lot more mild temperatures than it was this year. We had a little cooler temperature, so that's, that's my guess. Again, we'll, we'll watch the trends to make sure that it's, it's not something else. Telephone, though, in last year, we had, it's up over last year because it's last year, we had some telephone franchise taxes that showed up late, so they, they will level out next month from that. Transportation, the taxes, the gas tax is up sixteen point five percent fiscal year-to-date. I really question if that'll hold, you know, with gas prices going up so much, I would assume that people are going to stop or are used less. And gas taxes are not a percent of sales, they're, they're so much per gallon. So I would really expect that to start falling, falling off. But I hope I'm wrong, but I would expect that to fall off. And then just finally, the property tax payments, just as a reminder, those are small numbers because the vast majority, or about ninety-two percent of the receipts come in in December and January. So there's not much really to see there as far as trend-wise. Be happy to entertain any questions or comments? Thank you.
All right, moving along, we have public safety up next. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
I call for an ordinance accepting a proposal from Bell and Hook Company to furnish one Bell Air and Light truck for two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, delivery a hundred and twenty-eight packages every five, every single of the four chassis. This is the lowest of four bits approved by the chief of service, meets all requirements, and is within budgeted amount.
Okay, so on this one here, we have two ordinances on the agenda tonight. And just so everybody's aware, on the two hundred and five thousand, the goal was is to eventually go ahead and acquire two squad trucks, right? And we went ahead and put off one, but with the rising costs that we're experiencing now, the staff thought that it may be wise to go ahead and lock in the rate of two hundred and five thousand for both of the squad trucks. So the ordinances you have before you, the first one would just be purchasing one of those squad trucks. The second one would be purchasing both of those squad trucks and locking in those rates before they go up because I'm sure we're all aware that everything is either, A, you can't get it, or B, it's through the loop as far as how expensive it is. So if you're in favor of purchasing one squad truck, vote yes on the first one. If you're not in favor of that, and you're in favor of purchasing two squad trucks, then you need to vote no on the first ordinance, and then vote yes on the second ordinance, so.
I guess I would add to, part of the reasoning behind looking at doing both now is that regardless of how many trucks we're doing, it is really going to hit next fiscal year because the lead time is at least fourteen months for the, for the chassis, and then another four months for the, for the body. So at the very least, it's going to be next fiscal year before we do this. And then I did also, Mayor, I did have an opportunity to talk with our legal counsel about the process for having this two options. So if you would give us some advice on how, procedurally, how best to do that.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You do have options in front of you this evening, and it's a situation where you can choose one or the other ordinance. What I might recommend is if someone feels strongly for whether to purchase one truck or to purchase two, that they, they would make a motion for the approval of the ordinance. If, you know, let's say if someone makes a motion to approve the two-truck ordinance, you go through the discussion and you end up voting that down, you could certainly always then make a motion for the one truck, or vice versa. But you don't necessarily, if you, if you pass one, then there's no need to pass the other because it's either or.
So staff would recommend for a motion for the second ordinance, the purchase of two trucks?
I say move. I'll second.
And a motion from Councilman Robinson, and a second from Councilman Oldham. It's for number two, so this is the purchase of two squad trucks.
And just so we're clear before anyone votes, then assuming if this vote were to be approved, passed this ordinance, then the first ordinance would just be void, essentially. It's not necessary.
All right. Call for the reading of the second ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one ten, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of two air and light squad trucks.
Second reading.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Marshall, and a second from Councilman Cross. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one ten, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of two air and light squad trucks.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Cross, and a second from Councilman Foster. Real call, please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Second item of the civil emergency code update. I call for an ordinance to revise the city of Sedalia code so that it does not restrict the state law.
Can the council discussion?
No, I'm, this is one ordinance that I'm really happy that we're getting a pass. You know, this is a revision of an ordinance that we have, and knowing Mayor Dawson, you know, he would never execute these powers, but it's nice to have this ordinance revision revised where it does protect the second ordinance.
Thank you. Anything further? Let's see, call for the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one eleven, an ordinance amending section twenty dash one forty-eight, powers of the mayor of Article Four Civil Emergencies of Chapter Twenty Emergency Management and Services of the Code of the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Oldham, second from Councilman Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one eleven, an ordinance amending section twenty dash one forty-eight, powers of the mayor of Article Four Civil Emergencies of Chapter Twenty Emergency Management and Services of the Code of the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage.
A motion from Councilman Oldham, second from Councilman Richardson. Real call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Fire Academy has quit resolution in ordinance. I call for a resolution to increasing budgeted expenditures relating to equipment purchase for the Fire Academy. Twelve helmets, twelve sets, twelve non-mantitude, non-mantitude amounts not exceeding four grand, recommended by Chief Wirt.
Okay, we have a resolution and ordinance on the agenda. Go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution nineteen sixty-four, a resolution authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, relating to the purchase of additional equipment for the Fire Academy.
Motion to approve.
Yes. I will take a motion from Councilman Cross, and who had a second? Councilman Robinson had a second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one twelve, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, regarding the purchase of additional equipment for the Fire Academy.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Cross, a second from Councilman Oldham. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one twelve, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, regarding the purchase of additional equipment for the Fire Academy.
Final passage. Second.
Motion from Councilman Cross, and a second from Councilman Oldham. Real call, please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
All right, that's all we have for public safety. Public works, Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
We have four items tonight. First item, we need to approve the lease for the senior, for the senior center to house the operations in the Hickory community.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one thirteen, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and Sedalia Parks and Recreation and the Sedalia Senior Center.
Second reading.
Second.
Well, a motion from Councilman Oldham, and a second from Councilman Marshall. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one thirteen, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Parks and Recreation, and the Sedalia Senior Center.
Final passage.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Oldham, and a second from Councilman Richardson. Real call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Second item I have tonight, we need to approve an agreement with Whisper ISP for the internet services and maintenance of their equipment for the airport.
Any further council discussion? Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one fourteen, an ordinance authorizing an elevated structure agreement bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and Whisper ISP LLC, a Delaware corporation.
Second reading.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Oldham, second from Councilman Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one fourteen, an ordinance authorizing an elevated structure agreement bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and Whisper ISP LLC, a Delaware corporation.
Final passage.
A motion from Councilman Oldham, and a second from Councilman Richardson. Real call, please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Third item I have tonight, is we need to adopt a new fee structure for the airport. Director Dodson has reviewed our fee structure, as well as others, and believes the best route to take would be to waive the airport usage fee when purchasing fuel and other services. Director Dodson is here, and if there's anything you'd like to add, or if there's any questions at the council.
Any further council discussion? Having heard none, call for the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one fifteen, an ordinance adding airport service fees to the city's fee schedule.
Second reading.
Second.
Well, a motion from Councilman Oldham, and a second from Councilman Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one fifteen, an ordinance adding airport service fees to the city's fee schedule.
Final passage.
A motion from Councilman Oldham, and a second from Councilman Richardson. Real call, please.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Fourth and finally, is we need to approve the contract with Hanson Tree Lawn and Landscaping Services for grinding yard waste material.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, call for the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one sixteen, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for yard waste grinding.
Second reading.
Second.
Well, a motion by Councilman Oldham, and a second by Councilman Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand and twenty-two dash one sixteen, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for yard waste grinding.
Final passage.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Oldham, and a second by Councilman Marshall. Real call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Okay, next time we have is our liquor licenses?
We have one new license and seven renewals. New license for Rebecca Embry doing business at Corner Lounge at sixteen oh four South Ohio. It's for a special event for a wedding at the Foundry on June twenty-fifth. And renewals for Dakota Keel doing business at Casey's General Store, number ten fifty-two, at seven sixteen West Sixteenth for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Tiffany Hockaday doing business at Casey's General Store, number ten sixty-three, at nineteen oh nine West Main for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Sherry Buckmore doing business at Casey's General Store, number sixteen oh one, at thirty-five hundred West Sixteenth for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Freedom Esser doing business at Casey's General Store, number twenty-three forty-seven, at sixteen oh one East Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Christina Moore doing business at Casey's General Store, number thirty-two fifty-seven, at three thousand fifty South Limit for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Charles Wanting doing business at Shea Win at one twenty-one East Third for Liquor by the Drink, and Sean Loomis doing business at Applebee's at thirty-three twenty West Broadway for Liquor by the Drink and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Oldham, and a second from Councilman Marshall. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. See, we have any miscellaneous items from the mayor, city council, or city administrator?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city council, the mayor, city administrator, and staff for the nice plan that they sent at my foot too. So thank you.
You're welcome, Mike.
Sorry for your loss. I have one item. A couple of years ago, Councilman Foster, myself, had a discussion about the need for a panhandling ordinance. There was a lot of issues, I believe, that year with safety. Since then, we've kind of, I've kind of constructed an ordinance for that, reviewed it with Chief Wirt. I think I'm, if I haven't already, will here in the next couple of days, but bring it to you, Mr. Mayor. The season's getting warmer, the, that activity's happening a little bit more, so the ordinance that I've constructed, that we can discuss, just protects individuals who are performing the act of panhandling and those who provide. But this also protects their second amendment right, sorry, I'm sorry, the first amendment right for their freedom of speech. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, maybe that's a discussion we can have about creating something like that.
Okay. Yeah, maybe we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Anything else?
I'd just like to say thank you to the city of Sedalia, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Park Department, everyone that was involved in helping bring our Juneteenth celebration together. It was a great day. It's hot, but it was a great one.
Yeah. All right, today I got to go out and see them laying down some, rebuilding some road off North Quincy. That was exciting. They went in with a new milling machine, milled that all out, and then they backfilled some spots where the base failed, and then they're going in and putting down new asphalt. Pretty exciting, rebuilding some roads.
Did you get on the machine and operate?
No, they will not let me do that, and I don't blame them. That'd be a good way to mess something up. All right, do I have any, you know, we'll move along to the good welfare portion. Do I have anyone from the audience who would like to go ahead and approach council?
Good evening, Mr. Shaw in council. My name's Jeremy Pepin. I'm here representing today professional firefighters, Local One oh three. I know a lot of you know me already. I'm here tonight to cordially invite all of you to the Firefighters Memorial Event this Saturday at the Firefighters Memorial at Liberty Park. As many of you know, we hold a firefighter memorial motorcycle ride annually to both remember our fallen firefighters and raise funds for scholarships and to maintain the firefighter memorial at Liberty Park. This year's event will also include a remembrance ceremony of our fallen brothers who paid the ultimate sacrifice while on duty protecting the citizens of Sedalia. Many of you have attended this event before, but this year's a little bigger because of the remembrance. So we'd just be honored if any of you would join us at ten a.m. on Saturday. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pepin. Anyone else who'd like to address council? I just need you, when you come to the microphone, state your name and your address for us.
My name's Renaldo Bedoya. I live at thirty-one thirty South Ingram here in Sedalia. I'm a owner of Apple Construction and Roofing. Been in this town for about four years, started my company about four years. Here the last two years, we've been very busy, busy with numerous big projects here in town. We've done countless projects, can't even think how many, but we've done so many. I am here just because the city with Miss Lake's here was going to pull my license for a couple of violations that we've had last year and some here not too long ago as well. And I just wanted to come in hopes that we could come to an agreement with all of you council members here of possibly getting another chance at this and not pull my license. Like I said, I feel like we're very important here in town. I've got about twenty employees, and, I mean, we literally done a lot of the projects where we're currently working at. Like the KD Health Center here, we did help the Kruegers with prefered construction. We helped them. I have other people that help me, and I'm just here to hopefully get another chance at it and not get my license taken away.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Mr. Renaldo.
Yeah. Do you all, do you all, I guess, how does this work out? I've never done this before.
Yeah, basically, what we would do is schedule a hearing, a formal hearing with council, and at that point, you'll be able to present basically your side of the story, your evidence, and those kinds of things, and as well as the city will present their reasoning behind the administrative decision. And then council will hear that and then render a decision. So we'll get that on the schedule and let you know when that would be.
Okay, thank you very much. Like I said, I don't even know what to say. My first time ever doing something. Yeah. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming down. Anyone else? All right. Having heard none, I will entertain a motion to move to a closed-door meeting.
A motion to move to closed-door session for legal advice and the rest of the thing.
A motion from Councilman Oldham, a second from Councilman Richardson. Real call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss. Bliss.[1772.82]